Meeting to order, if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight. You call the roll, please.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Bachman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. Okay, thank you. So tonight we have a special presentation by Debbie Stahl from Northmont Community Table. Step up to the podium there, thank you.
Good evening. I'm here this evening at the invitation of Councilwoman Kelly, who had a conversation recently with one of our board members, Beth Kraus, and discovered that there may be a lot of people in our community that still don't know about Community Table, who we are and what we do. And so I just wanted to come and maybe some that gives you a little bit more information about us. I like to use it as my guide to kind of walk us through this. It helps do two things. It helps me keep on track so that I don't tell too many stories because I have lots and lots of them. But it's also something, a tool for you to take with you so that if you ever have a need to refer someone to our services, you have that in front of you. Community Table is a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that is a group of the churches and organizations in the Northmont community who've come together to help reach out to those in our community that are in financial need. Our background is, we started in 2008. The market had crashed. People were getting laid off left and right. It was a real financial struggle, much like it is today. The phones in the offices of one of our churches, Salem Church God, was ringing off the hook, people looking for financial assistance. This young woman happened to go to one of our pastors and said, "We can't do this by ourselves. We need a community effort in this Northmont community to be able to come together to help provide services for these folks." So that started a conversation. The churches in the Northmont community were invited to come down, sit down, begin conversation, what can we do? Initially, there were like three or four churches that came together to start that conversation. But over the process of the next year, we laid out a plan, how that, what would that look like? How would we initiate that? Established a 501(c)(3), established our bylaws. And so in 2009, 15 years ago, we became official. So several of our different projects that we do for the community is, the first one is what we call our front porch. And that's where the calls come into our phone bank, people looking for assistance. They need help with their rent, with their utility bill, maybe their car has broken down. They can't get to work and they don't have the financial resources to be able to take care of that. So we, our intake people, talk to those folks, find out exactly what the situation is, where have they reached out for help, what other social services have they tried to get assistance from? And if they have exhausted those efforts and there's no other option, then we do our best to try to take care of whatever that need is. That to date, we have offered over $100,000 of emergency assistance in that time. So I can't help but believe that we are not making a difference in the lives of some of these fam, you know, these folks who are really struggling. So that's one of our programs. Another one of our programs is our church school partnership. And one of our biggest events is the Back to School Fair. Some of you may have seen the flyers out there. We're currently collecting back to school supplies. Currently, we have 500 children registered to come on August the 4th to Crestview Church to receive their school supplies. We don't do a generic pack like a lot of the organizations do. Because all of our families are pre-registered, when they arrive, we give each student their actual list. We have a volunteer go with each one of them and they get to pick out all their items from the line. It's an opportunity for us to just show these families that someone cares about the situation they're in, to not feel, let them feel embarrassed about needing the assistance and just to kind of love on the kids for that, that time. This year, we're partnering with Northmont Fish and those families will also receive a food box on that afternoon. So it's, it's a great big event and we're just really very, very happy to be able to reach these kids in that way. It lets them start on the same playing field as their peers. And so they have the tools that they need. The other thing that continues under that partnership all year is the teachers, the principals, the counselors and nurses know who we are. They know that we are a resource if there's a child that comes without a coat or with shoes that don't fit anymore, or some kind of a crisis in the family. And we do our best to try to help meet that need. And that can be a wide range of things beyond what I have mentioned. One of the things that I think I remember most is a family, that two of the children's mother died unexpectedly. They didn't have proper clothes for a funeral. And so the staff reached out to us and we saw that that need was met. So those are some of the things that we do through our, our, our school partnership. Not every community is as fortunate as we are to have a school that welcomes an organization like us. Our Northmont School is incredible at welcoming us and knowing that we are a resource that all we want to do is help their kids. So it's, it's great to be able to have that, that working relationship with them. Along that similar line, Backpack Food Friends on the weekends, we send, during the school year, we send home a bag of food that is kid-friendly, that they can manage over the weekend if they're struggling for food, when they don't have access to their free and reduced lunches and breakfasts. So this takes care of them. Last year, we had 102 students enrolled in that program. And so if you calculate up those meals for that whole weekend, it's in excess of 1,200 meals that we sent home. So it's a great program. Clayton has been very supportive. You know, when we've done food drives to help bring in items, those kid-friendly items. So we really appreciate, you know, your cooperation here in the city to help us help those kids. Lastly, the Christmas store, again, it's a program very similar to our Back to School Fair. And it allows families that are registered with us to come in and actually pick out gifts for their children. Each child is given three gifts in addition to hats and gloves and socks and warm winter items that they may need. And then we wrap those things up and send them on their way and they have Christmas taken care of. So those are our major programs that we have that go on all the time. We always have our eyes and ears open for anything else in the community that may be going on that, that maybe needs a little extra help. We don't always know what that is. But we're always willing to have conversation and try to help take care of that need. On the back of your flyer there, it does have the list of the churches that are currently involved. Like I said, we do have a great working relationship also with Northmont Fish, you know, because a lot of their clients are also the people that we help serve through the St. Vincent de Paul Society. And Northmont Rotary has been one of our really big supporters, as well as all those churches and a lot of private individuals. So that's a little bit about who we are. I would be glad to ask Grant any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions or comments?
I've got a question. Where, where is the best location, if you wanted to give items, where would you go to donate those?
Okay, currently, the, the school fair items, we're collecting, there's a bin here in your lobby. There's also one at the Y. There's a large barrel at the Y, the HEC Center, Northmont Fish, those are all places where you could drop off items.
Okay, and also wanted to ask, what's the best way, if you wanted to make a monetary donation, what's the best way to do that?
The address is, is here that you can write it, you know, or check or money order, whichever is preferable, to Community Table Incorporated. And it can be mailed to the address on the front of the brochure, which is 1123 South Main Street in Inglewood. That is Concord United Methodist Church, and they have allowed us to use their mailing address for our mailing address.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. Any others? Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Well, thank you for coming in and thanks for the good work.
No, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our Clerk's Report. Can you read the?
Okay, first before you is the Work Session Minutes of June 20th, 2024.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do abstain on both of these reports since I was not in attendance last week. So do we do a roll, a voice roll call? Okay.
Farmer?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Abstain.
You also have before you the Counseling Meeting Minutes of June 20th, 2024.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the abstain. Roll call, please.
Farmer?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Abstain. All right, thank you. So the next item on our agenda is our visitors' comments. Give me just one second. Okay, I'm gonna read these in the order that they are on the list. And everyone has checked either yes or no. So if you check no and you've decided to speak, you're still allowed to speak. So I'll just read the list as it, as it reads here. Earl Homer? Nope. Thank you, sir. Chris Pulis? Jim Kelly? Gail Kelly? Jeremy Blamford? Charlotte Jones? Joshua? Okay. We, what's that? No? I'm sorry. Joshua, yes? Yeah, come on up. And if you'll step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Joshua Majewicz, 7601 Elru Drive. So I guess a couple of weeks ago, there's been some weird activity going on at the end of our street on Elru. There's a rental property that they're proposing turning into a troubled home for youth, children. So we were told to bring our concerns in front of the City Council and see what can be done about that, if anything. And, you know, I don't know if there's like an ordinance for that or if there's bylaws or whatever you'd call that. I don't know.
Well, we are familiar with that. Actually, we just became familiar with this.
So did we?
Yeah, you were like, knew about it before we did. I think, I don't think they've done anything yet. I'll, I'll let Amanda fill you in on this.
So our code does allow for residential care facilities in residential neighborhoods. There are parameters that they have to meet. The one that you're talking about in particular had not contacted, the city had not contact this administration at all about whether or not they could put one there. I will tell you that there are some fair housing laws that kind of limit our ability to limit those type of things when they go in. But we are working with the property owner, because it is a rental property, on whether or not they want that to be located in that place. I don't think that they were completely aware of the fact that that was the plan. So that's where that stands right now. But just, I sent an email out to council this morning with the code section basically stating that they are permitted within residential districts.
When I went by earlier today, the lady was unloading a pickup truck into the garage. So they are doing something up there, Amanda.
It's just a weird, law weird stuff going on. Yeah. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I guess, you know, until we hear something, I don't know what else we could, you know, say at this point. But we, we are aware of it and we appreciate, I don't know, was it you who had brought it to our attention, maybe? Someone in your neighborhood?
Yeah, I received an email from a resident. I think Ellen received an email from a different resident. And I think maybe she took a couple of phone calls today about it as well, so.
Are they required to contact the city?
So per our code, yes, but it's not until they get all of their ducks in a row with the state. So once they have their ducks in a row with the state and the state approves what they're doing, and then they would come to the city and then we would look at zoning. And typically, what prohibits those type of facilities from going in is the requirement for parking. Because I think the requirement is one parking space per bed that they have. So typically, there's not enough parking in a residential neighborhood for them to facilitate that.
I guess, I guess my question as far as, how do we know when this is actually going to be in place? That they're going to actually have people present? If they don't have to contact the city?
Well, they, they do. Our code requires that they get a zoning certificate. So technically, they do have to contact the city. Now, whether or not they do, that's different. But when we find out, like if someone comes in and tells us that there is a facility operating and we don't have a zoning certificate on file, that's a key for us to then make contact with whomever that person is. But this one is now on our radar, so we know before it actually is implemented.
Do they know they have to do all this?
They do. Ellen talked to the person who was renting the property today and we've also made contact with the property owner who doesn't live locally.
The property owner's out of town, aren't they, Amanda?
Yes, they are. They don't live local, but they do have a local property manager.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Grimes? Will step up and, you know the drill.
Scott Grimes, 3610 Northfield Road. The reason I asked to speak tonight was, just had, wanted to ask some questions about the decision to discontinue the fall curbside leaf pickup program. I recently sent an email to all of you and unfortunately, I only heard back from Kenny. So I wanted to come tonight and kind of get some answers if I could. I assume that the decision is, is still that we will not be doing a curbside leaf pickup. Is that correct? Okay. So when I sent an email to Amanda Zimmerlin, she told me that residents were going to be advised to bag all their leaves and put them out with their trash for Rumkey to pick up. So is Rumkey aware of this? I mean, I, in my, in my neighborhood, typically, I would say during peak fall season, I'm gonna have 15 to 25 bags at least a week. And is Rumkey gonna be willing to pick up 15 to 25 bags at my curbside every week?
Do you want me to go ahead and answer? Okay. So with the new contract that we have, we do have it stipulated in there that from October 1st to December 15th, Rumkey will collect leaves. We talked to our local representative and she said that yes, that will not be an issue and they will be able to accommodate that.
Okay, okay. So then my next question is, people are, a lot of people aren't gonna do that. I mean, that's a lot of extra work to bag leaves. You get an old guy like me and try and bag all those leaves and then drag them out to the curb. It's not fun and it's not easy. So what's gonna happen when people stop doing this? Our properties are gonna go to crap. I mean, our neighborhoods are gonna look like crap. So, you know, have you guys considered any other options for, for leaf pickup? Any other options for, you know, cut, cutting the budget? I mean, my, my first thing is, that I would say, is why do we continue to pump money into Meadowbrook at Clayton and put all this money into that when you're gonna cut services for people that, that need those services? I mean, last fall, or last spring, when you put the tax levy on, I talked to a lot of neighbors. We walk, my wife and I walk a lot, talked to a lot of neighbors, talked to a lot of friends. The biggest thing that most people said about that tax levy is, why are they asking for more money from us when they continue to run a golf course that's used by maybe what, 10%, 20% of the entire population in Clayton? Why do they pump money into a golf course? Why do they pump money into a building over there that's, I've been in it. It's, it's got a lot of problems. And, you know, we spend all this money and then we cut services. And people, people are, I mean, a lot of people, the thing that I heard, they called it the good old boys' club over there. That's what it was called. Clayton's a good old boys' club over there. And I mean, I think, I think it's a legitimate concern. If you want to pass a tax levy, you gotta get in front of this and tell people, hey, you know, what's the reason that we need this? Why do we need Meadowbrook at Clayton? Why do we need a golf course? Why do we need that building, especially now that we've suspended all activities over there, you know? Why do we need this? Is there a way that we can sell that property and use that money to fund some of this stuff that we're taking away? So I guess that's, that was, that's just my comments. I'd, I'd like to hear, you know, anybody's responses, if you have any.
Well, I'll, I'll just tell you what my opinion is on it. There are a couple, couple things. Number one, you know, we weren't messing around when we told people there was gonna be some consequences on the tax. We, we don't want more taxes either. No one up here, everyone up here lives in Clayton too. You know, we don't, we don't want more taxes either. Unfortunately, there's very little revenue that comes into a city. Meadowbrook is one. We get revenue in there. Other ways are generally grants, you know, things like that, or bonds, or, or the taxes. So, you know, we tried, we're trying to make the best monetary decision that we can with, with that, in that aspect. As far as the leaves go, I think Kenny mentioned it in his email. I saw his response. You know, I live in Valley Brook where there's tons of trees. And I have locust trees, so they have tiny confetti leaves. So it's not such a big thing for me. But in, in the lower part of Valley Brook, there are oak trees and, and, you know, sycamores that have huge leaves. It's gonna be an issue for them. And I think, again, I think Kenny threw out a, an idea that we haven't, I haven't spoken to anyone about this. But I think it's, it may be, we may be able to revisit maybe one pickup. You know, I mean, I would be willing to open up that conversation. Whether or not we can get that, I, I don't know. Like I said, we have not talked about the, like the logistics or the money or anything like that. It doesn't seem like much to pick up leaves, but I'm telling you, it equals a lot of money. And actually, Amanda's put together some figures for this. It's a lot of money. And it, it costs us, you know, close to, for the, for the leaf pickup, close to what we subsidized Meadowbrook. Wasn't that far off for the, for the year. So, you know, I hear you and I, I don't disagree with you. I, I wanna try to get this thing through, but I'm not gonna, I'm just not gonna make any promises to you, just being upfront with you about it. So. Amanda, what was the amount of the program?
So for 2023, we have four people that run two leaf machines. It was $60,000, $60,878. If we look at for 2024, the estimated cost, if we're using the truck numbers from last year, it's 69,808. The city has started utilizing the FEMA numbers for all of our equipment on the off chance that we would need to use them for an emergency and have reimbursement. With those numbers, it's $88,390.
And what did we subsidize Meadowbrook at last year?
About $180.
So $60,180 are really close at all. That's three times. I thought it was a little closer, but okay. So I'm off on that. But I mean, you get my point here. It's not, you know, it's not cheap to do this. And when you look at all these programs, we, I hate that we're not utilizing Meadowbrook over there for all these programs. You know, the, the Christmas programs and the fireworks and all that stuff. That's what we want it for. We don't, we don't want it for necessarily a golf course. As you know, I've told you 100 times, you know, I hit 10 golf balls a year. I'm not a golfer at all. So it's not, you, you just have to look beyond the golf course and, and look, you know, but, but we're not gonna be able to do those things if we don't have the cash flow. That's just all there is to it.
I guess I just wonder, how do you justify cutting essential services for your residents but still pumping $180,000 into that over there? How do you justify that? I don't understand that. What, what is the benefit to the members of the community?
So the only thing that I'll, I'll say about Meadowbrook, so if you look at it not just as a golf course, but if you frame it as an actual park, none of our other parks bring in any revenue at all. And we budget roughly over, what's it, about $150,000 a year, every year, for the other parks. For Meadowbrook, it's about the 180 that we put in from the general fund to maintain. So it kind of, it, it evens out. If you look at Meadowbrook as a park, parks don't generate money. And this one at least generates some money, is able to sustain somewhat, and then is only subsidized the 180 the council puts in.
Yeah, I guess I look at it though, that a park, a general park, anyone can go to a park and they can do anything. They can picnic there or whatever. Only golfers are gonna go to Meadowbrook. I mean, so you've got a very limited audience there. But that's just my opinion. And, and I am gonna tell you that I think if you, if you really want to pass another tax levy, you need to get in front of this because it's a big issue with people. It really is. And it's not just me, it's a lot of people. So that's my opinion.
Amanda, I know that you had asked for a voice vote. I know we were gonna talk about it later for your report. Is that something that if we ask for a vote, voice vote, Martina, does it have to be on the agenda for later on? Or can we do it during the City Manager's Report or?
I would suggest during the City Manager's Report. That's typically where we've done it before.
Okay, thank you. I would, I would be okay with a voice vote to, to open the discussion. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Reopen the discussion. Yeah, thank you. I mean, so, okay. Thank you, sir. Kyle? Is it Aug, Aug?
It's Augie.
Augie.
Kyle Augie, 6720 Oakfield Drive. I'd like to kind of piggyback on what Scott. I'd like to piggyback on what Scott said. I have real concerns about the aesthetics of eliminating the leaf program. I think that, you know, a couple of issues that I have with the leaf program is that the expense of the leaf program is exacerbated by the amount of customized service that's been provided. I see it all the time on our street and I live in a pretty, a pretty old growth tree area. I see the trucks come by multiple times in each segment, like, so if somebody makes a mistake and, and doesn't get their leaves out on time, or they see the truck go by and get their neighbors and think, oh, I should've raked those out. They can rake them to the leaves and the guys will circle back. And that's a tremendous expense. I, as some of you know, I used, while I addressed this council a few years ago, I, I used to work for Rumkey for 35 years. And when you circle big trucks back through, have to go back through neighborhoods over and over again for misses or for, or for any type of return visits, it's very expensive. So I would, I would recommend if you're gonna consider, as you said, Scott, maybe doing a, you know, maybe doing a one pickup thing, taking a more hardline stance and saying, if we're gonna provide one or two pickups, to say, you don't get the, you don't get the blessing of calling the city and saying, I missed, you know, I missed it, didn't get my leaves out in time and having the guys go back. That's a tremendous expense. I'm cut, I, I'm a little disappointed that the, I, I learned through from discussions with some of my former workers at Rumkey that, that discontinuation of the leaf program was a big surprise to them, that it wasn't brought up at all in the discussions leading up to it. But if you've talked to them and they say, put the leaves out there, that's great. I'm a little surprised at that. I think people are gonna be really surprised at how late in the fall, how late trash trucks are going through their neighborhood because that's going to, that's going to entail multiple trips to the, multiple trips to the disposal site. The guys are gonna be way behind because in our neighborhood, I have concerns about some of the, you know, I'm almost 70 years old. I've got a lot of my neighbors that live around me that put out huge amounts of leaves at the curb. And the thought of them having to bag those from a, from a health standpoint is concerning. I'm certainly not looking forward to it. But, but the aesthetics of the neighborhood is just gonna be, when people, people are gonna rake, rake their leaves to the curb when they, when they realize maybe they didn't pay attention to the newsletter or most people don't visit the city's website on a regular basis as much as we'd all like that to be as a communication tool. People are gonna rake those leaves out there. They're gonna call, staff's gonna say, no, we discontinued that program. And those leaves are gonna be out there and then it's gonna be raining. It's, there's gonna be the front, the front sections of people's lawns, all over, big sections of Clayton, are gonna be, you know, gonna have rotted leaves. It's gonna kill, it's gonna kill the lawn. So in the spring, people are gonna look up and there's gonna be this big brown. And it's just, the curb appeal to the city's gonna be impacted. So I hope that you guys will look at, the, the golf course thing, my, my opinion on that is, somebody said that 10 or, 10 or, somebody earlier said 10 or 15% of the city residents utilize the golf. I'd be shocked if the percentage of, of the percentage of residents of Clayton is anywhere near 10 or 15% using, using the golf. near 10 or 15% using, using the golf course. But that's, I don't know the economics of that, and that's, that's for you guys to work out. But I'm very concerned about the, the aesthetics of the city. I mean, we have a beautiful city, and there are sections of Clayton that this will be very little impact. Somebody's, you know, somebody can rake, rake their leaves together and put four bags out at the curb. It won't impact Rumkey, won't impact the aesthetics at all. But in my neighborhood, I see, just like Scott's, I see people that, you know, I have leaves this deep, four, you know, three or four times that I have to deal with. So I think it's going to be, it's going to be an issue. But thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, sir. On that note, I don't, I don't want to put Randy on the spot here, but I've got a question for you on this. Is this, should we be concerned about like the sewers and things in this case? Or I just, I don't know. I'm just asking.
It is. I mean, obviously, you don't want leaves in a sewer system. You don't want it in a storm system. It can, I, I won't say it can plug the system, typically it won't, but it will definitely get in the storm sewers. I know somebody had mentioned picking up one time. I don't see one pickup, as crazy as this may sound, being a whole lot cheaper. Because now I have to make five trips for each location, like these gentlemen just said, they've got a lot of leaves. I'll use Pebblebrook and Valley Brook, for instance. We don't just make two trips. I know you guys see that plan of making two trips, and like that gentleman just said, no, it'll be four, or five, or six trips. And it's because there's just that many leaves. So when you're waiting and only picking up once, one time at the end of the, you're going to have a crazy amount of leaves, and those drivers are going to have to make five or six trips for each road to dump, come back, dump, come back. Like the gentleman said, it's going to take some fuel. So I, I don't know that one pickup will be a whole lot cheaper than multiple pickups. So that's just something for you guys to think about.
How many years have we been picking up leaves, Randy?
Since I've been here 10 years, so it's probably been more than that. Those leaf machines are older than that, so.
How many years have you been picking up leaves?
At least as long as Randy's been here.
When the city came to city, I know, I'm quite sure of that.
Say that, I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, I know it's been, like Randy said, at least 10 years, and we've done it every year since I've been here. And one thing that I would have council remember, you know, when Randy's talking about, and Mayor Stevens brought up the storm sewer, the purpose of the leaving program is for the storm sewers. It's not for the aesthetics of the city. It's part of the, is it the EPA plan or whatever for the clean storm sewers? So, you know, if you are considering reinsta, or having the leaf program done this year, my recommendation would be that we limit it to those streets that have the storm sewer system. So we are at least meeting the guidelines that we've set for ourselves for that, if that is what council decides to do.
Okay, thank you. So I went through the list of, of everyone who signed. Did anyone not sign in that would like to speak? If you do, step up. Nope? Okay. Well, thanks all for your input. We appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is old business, and we have one ordinance, and this will be the second reading. So will you read that ordinance?
I'll move for approval. Kevin did such a great time job last time.
Ordinance O-062408, an ordinance authorizing the submission, acceptance, acquisition, and purchase of specified parcels from Montgomery County, Ohio, for an amount not to exceed $15,000, and the subsequent disposition of same in connection with the expedited tax foreclosure program.
I'll move for approval. Second.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I got a question just before we, Martina, I mean, these are for properties that have not had tax collections made going back to 2005, 2008. Normally, when, when property is delinquent and property taxes, they end up going to sheriff's sale or something. Is there any, why these were never put forth through the county?
I, I do not have a good reason. I know what you're saying because I see the foreclosures, and usually, I, I think a lot of it may just be the individual lender, whether or not they're pushing that. That's the best answer I can give you. Otherwise, I'd have to go through and look through each one to see, you know, is there something specific about this one, and why they didn't take it to foreclosure earlier or not?
Because I got on the auditor's website, you know, and I've, by, by looking at some of the property owners, as far as looking at where these people live, one guy lives down in Germantown, and the other guy lives over in Inglewood. It's like, if they're, if they can, if there's an address listed for somebody on the auditor's website, why wasn't somebody not going to, I mean, I'm not us saying this.
I agree with you, but I, yeah.
Why are we having to take that, this step to do this and have us, cost us money when somebody else should have been doing this?
I agree. I don't know why.
Is there any way of voicing our, my displeasure back to somebody at the county's site in terms of why someone wasn't taking an active part in doing this?
Yeah, and, and I don't have a good reason. I mean, I can, I can try to contact the auditor and get some additional information as to why some of these go for so long. I'm sure, at the end of the day, I'm sure it probably comes down to a financial reason. That's my guess.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, something that's just on the books for, you know, undelinquent taxes for $50,000 on something that's, you know, 15, $16,000 in total value, it seems to be like, somebody missed the vote, and now we're paying to collect something, to take it off the tax delinquency list.
And I don't know what the state's properties are, quite honestly. I don't know if they're deteriorating. Amanda and I know better than I deteriorate.
They're all, they're vacant lots that we've been mowing. They're all vacant lots.
I had a question. Amanda, is there a plan going forward, once we have these properties? Are they going to be put up for sale? Or what's, what's the idea?
So I think that the property owners who have been, who are adjacent to those are interested in, in taking over those properties. So they're no longer the city's responsibility.
Does that mean they will purchase them?
Well, it would depend. So if they're willing to take over responsibility for mowing and maintenance of the properties, and we're no longer doing it, I don't see why the city wouldn't be able to just transfer the property to them.
If they're costing us like $2,500, $2,500 apiece to take this off the tax list, maybe we can recoup our monies we've invested by asking the persons to just pay $2,500 bucks.
Absolutely. That would be a decision for council to make, once we have actual possession of the properties.
And transferring the properties wouldn't, would not mean that we would pay the backpack, back taxes.
No, we would not pay the back taxes.
That would go to the?
No, the, they would just get wiped. The taxes would get wiped. I know at least one of these properties, our finance director has been in contact with the person who lives next door, who is interested in taking over the property, but doesn't have the funds to pay the back taxes that are on the property at this time. And as it stands right now, we're, are, the city is rendering the services of mowing and maintaining the property, and then it's just getting assessed again to that property. So it's just kind of a, a cycle.
I'd just like to see us come back with a zero position, as far as if we're paying money out, we can get something back in return, and just zero it out on the books.
Okay, that's all right. Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, so is there a motion to pass as written?
Kenny, so.
Oh, yeah. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. And we have some new business on the docket tonight. Will you read the first ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-072410, an ordinance to repeal Clayton codified ordinance, Chapter 1519, fireworks, and replace with updated version of Clayton codified ordinance, Chapter 1519, fireworks appended heretofu as Exhibit A.
Martina, which municipality does this language mirror?
Correctly, yeah. If I remember correctly, Kenny, the last time we had this on the agenda in February, I believe, was Trotwood, and that's what Amanda just referenced. And I will say, I did, you know, yesterday, I spent some time looking through, and of the cities who have passed bans, this is pretty in line with, you know, they just pretty much have used the same or similar language, if they're just going to ban it outright in the municipality. So it's very similar to what other ones have enacted.
Well, I know that I had asked for this to go on the agenda due to the amount of inquiries I got from residents. And, I mean, myself included, I had bottle rocket debris in my backyard. I know none of my neighbors were obviously shooting them off, so I don't know where they came from. I know that last time I had asked for this, it didn't pass. I would like to have a conversation with council to say, you know, if this is what Trotwood has, I'm fine with it. If you want to amend it and make it like, you can't discharge if you're within 300 feet of another property or structure, I would be okay with it. But I think that the main concern is the densely populated Ward Two, Valley Brook, a lot of where Tim's at, and Savina, Dominican, this area obviously is much different when they get let off compared to out in the country in Ward One. So I don't know if council has any thoughts on changing the limit per their distance of another structure, or if you would be okay with this, so.
Any input?
I can tell you, as the one who lives bordering Trotwood, yeah, not everyone there sticks by that ban. In fact, most of the time around the Fourth and the holidays, any fireworks that I hear coming, you know, you can tell it's, it's from south. It's coming from that area. So, you know, I've looked at this, you know, when we discussed this earlier this year, both our safety chiefs, you know, basically said, this isn't going to change anything. I know a lot of the complaints came from people saying, you know, it was, things that were already, they were getting discharged already illegally there, outside the hours, things like that. So it's just one of those things where I think an outright, a ban here isn't going to change anything, is, is my opinion. And like I said, in Trotwood, you know, at least, you know, that, that section there right around, you know, Westbrook, Union, things like that, not that I'm hearing them all the time, you know, a bunch of them, but, yeah, I can tell, you know, there that people are still shooting them off.
I've lived here for many, many years, and up until 2022, it was illegal in the state of Ohio to allow fireworks. But there's not been a Fourth of July that has gone by in the 39 years I've been here that, that we haven't heard fireworks. And why we would try to prevent them now, like I said, it's been illegal for at least 75, 70 years that I can swear that I've been throwing them off. But in the last two years, it's been legal now, and now we're going to try and prevent it. I don't see the sense in that. It's, and, and you're going to hear them anyway.
Even if we banned it that, I still don't know how we're going to enforce it. Because I know for a fact, the hours of restriction, they still go off. Can you locate them, just like the report that was given? There was no location. You couldn't locate where they were coming from. Is that still the same?
And that's true. How, how do you locate them? I talked to Chief Wilson from Trotwood. They have a ban. He puts that as a low priority call. They get so many of them, they just don't bother. They're out doing other things. It takes officers away from doing something that could be more important. I have to agree with Mr. Gorman. He's been around a long time. I have too. We have never been able to stop fireworks. And it's, to me, and I'll apologize now, but I agree with Mr. Gorman, it's kind of senseless, to enact a ban on fireworks when Trotwood, Inglewood, Union, Brookville don't enforce it. So you'll walk outside, you're going to hear the fireworks anyway. So if you have any questions, I'll answer that. But I'll have to agree with Mr. Gorman on this.
I don't want to put you on the spot, Chris, but do you, I, I know the, you know, we got your, both of your emails. Do you know where they were coming from?
Ranch Hill.
Okay, I mean.
I drove by, got in my car, drove through there, and it's kids, and they're letting them off in the 152. I can tell you that, 1012. So, you know, could I have gotten out of the car? Yeah, but I have too much to lose.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I wouldn't ask you to do that.
I don't understand the concept of doing nothing. I really don't, guys, and I, I'm, I was going to just sit here and listen. We can't, we have no effect on the, on the citizen. And I said in my email, left the tail, wagged the dog, where we're going to be five years from now is going to be, all the things that we talked about, you're going to tear the fabric of the neighborhood down, and people are just not going to stay. I mean, that's what, those who have the ability to leave will leave, and then you're left with what you have. But not doing anything is, it's not, it should not be in the DNA of this city council. You should do something. And if that, I understand, you're not going to be able to track down everybody who lets off an M8. But M8s are a little different than a firecracker or a sparkler. And I understand Fourth of July, when it's 11 straight days, and well into the morning hours, eventually you go, I'm not sure where we're living. Okay, so I don't, I don't think anybody wants to live a fireworks 11 straight day. But to me, and I know what kind of burden it puts on the police, I really understand that. But if you're throwing out, if you're cruising, and you see somebody throwing off a firework like that, you simply write a citation and just go from there. You write tickets, park illegally on the street, I don't see why you can't write a ticket for somebody who lets off fireworks at 2:00 in the morning, if you can isolate where it's at. Or 11 o'clock on a Wednesday morning, when it's not even possible to actually let the firework off 11 days prior to Fourth of July. It's just gotten to the point where, again, I'll say it again, wagging the dog. And citizens have to be responsible, just like we make you responsible. You have to put some responsibility on that citizen. And if you don't, they're going to do whatever they want to do, whenever they want to do it. And it comes from, it comes from all sorts of things. And I know we have some rental issues, and I just wrote down the Elrue issue. I wasn't even aware of the Elrue issue. We have, we have homes on, on Mara, we have homes on, on, on Northfield that are being rented, and, and I'm telling you, it, it's going south fast, and we've got to put our, don't, we're going to look at each other, like I said, inside five years from now, this is going to be a very different community.
You know, coming from someone who's never bought a firework, which is me, I'm not a fan myself. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't buy them, and I, I'll go to a show, like our Clayton shows or Inglewood show, I'd go to those, maybe. I didn't go this year. So I'm not, I'm not a fan of fireworks, and I hear you loud and clear. When I, when I hear them going off, I'm thinking, you know, who's the idiot, you know, shooting them off at 2:00 in the morning or whatever? Unfortunately, I, I think my decision on this, so, like I said, it's not like I'm, you know, I'm not all about the, you know, don't step on my freedom and all that kind of stuff. I don't look at it that way. What I look at in this particular case is kind of what, I think I follow chief's line of thought more than anything else. The data just doesn't, just doesn't show that we, that we need to raise this up. It's no disrespect to you or anyone else, but I'm, I'm looking at, like, on the, we have a, we have a call log here, and you're not looking at it, but I can show it to you, where, you know, we, we got a total of, I think it's maybe 18 calls or something like that, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 of those were after 7/5, July 5. So there's the 3rd, 4th, and 5th, you know, you're allowed to shoot them off according to the state law. So 10 of the calls were in that timeframe, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not going to bat for them, but they, they were playing, they played by the rules. These other folks did not. And I do see one is on here, is on Ranch Hill, but, you know, none of them, you know, I, I'm not sure what the term broadcast is, what it was, we sent somebody by there or something, or?
They're just allowing the officers the information that that's going off.
Okay.
The officers are in something else, and the dispatch is saying, hey, we're giving a firework complaint.
But in my mind, I think that, and I don't want to speak for anyone else on the council, but in my mind, that drives the decision. If it was, you know, I'm not saying, you know, we want a million calls, but to me, it says that, yeah, it definitely is an inconvenience. And like I said, it's not something that I do or have ever done, or my family doesn't do. But, you know, to put something else on the books, to me, I'm the person that wants laws taken off the books if they're, if they're not enforceable. Because, you know, sit, some- Because, you know, some cities have that, I think we've kind of gleaned most of those out of our, our code here. But I don't want to put something on just to say that we did it, and that, because that does put Chief in a bad spot. You know, people are going to come in and say, hey, you know, why didn't you arrest this person? It might not be you, but it's going to be, somebody will come in and say, why didn't you arrest this person? You know, they were shooting off firecrackers or whatever. And I just think we have our personnel running around a lot for a small, again, I'm using my, please take my perspective on this, but, you know, for a small amount of complaints or a small amount of calls. The fire department, I don't believe, took any calls on that. So again, if it was, I think if it was a, something more, if we had more data on it, I think I'd be more inclined to jump on board with you and with Kenny and say, we need to do a ban on this. But I think it's, I just don't think it's going to work in this, work in this, this instance here, so, yeah.
Can I ask a question, Chris? When you saw those kids on Ranch Hill, did you call the PD? Did you call Clayton?
Well, we did not call, I did not call the police, because honestly... I think, I think there's a... ...out there, because honestly, I want to, I want to be very respectful, okay? But what you guys put out on the fireworks thing, probably evicted us to me. But I come from a very buttoned up Fortune 250 company. You lay something out there like that, you're fired. So I understand we're a small community, something... That's not a serious issue. A hundred or so communities would have never banned it. So what makes those communities different than us? Is it an expectation? No expectation of their citizens. To me, those communities that are... No expectation. They expect them to act in a certain way. And right now, we don't have that expectation in this community, because almost kind of live and let live. And I understand that, because some live on a five acre piece of property somewhere, I get it. But these homes are row homes. They're next to each other. They're literally in your backyard, and they're blowing off M-80s. These are not, these are not sparklers, guys. These are big pieces of fireworks. These have made incredible amount of noise. And if you're a vet, you know, I don't know how you get through this. I really don't, because it is a machine that's going off. To me, I think it's, apathy is not an option. I just don't, I don't like that. I've never been that guy. You're going to do something. Are you going to have some people that will backlash against it and be upset? Certainly. You all know that I sit on the school board, right? I had to close an elementary school last year, 200 people in the room. I'm not their favorite person. It's okay. I'm okay with that, because we had to make a fiscal decision for the district. This is no different. I think it's, you have to make decisions, because sometimes you're not going to get a whole lot of favor on, but I think there needs to be a level of expectation for the citizens, what kind of behavior is expected. And right now, every year, it matches it up a little bit more, and a little bit more. And there's going to be... Find fireworks in your backyard, you're going to go, how did they get here? How did these, how did these, how did these rockets get in my backyard? Allow people to do all these things, and you give them so much pushing to be able to do all this, all they do is continue to take more and more advantage of it. And that's where we're at now, and I, next year will be worse, and the year after, that'll be worse. My wife won't even come to these meetings anymore. She's simply stated, we won't be here for the Fourth of July week. We'll go somewhere, you know? And again, where it's, where it's at least controlled, maybe it's a community that, you know, they have their own, like we used to do here. We played, you guys fired off your fireworks, that was good enough, and it's not allowed. Some people will say, I'm going to, I'm going to support the law, and I'm not going to do that. But we have a lot of people that just, it doesn't matter, like, and I think Mr. Botman said it, there are going to be people that are going to let it off, it doesn't matter, they don't care about the law, they don't care about that. The only way that that's going to change... But if they pay $200 fine or $250 fine, make it painful, and they're going to stop what they're doing. Because that's how people act now, is what they're doing.
I would be willing to amend this to be within 300 feet of a structure. I don't know, Martina, how would we go about doing that?
I would have, yeah, we would have to table it, because that would be a substantive change, because I would need to go back and reword it to put that in there, Kenny, so, which I can certainly do and bring it back to the next meeting.
I mean, I, I wouldn't make a motion tonight, but I don't think it'll go anywhere. So I would at least say, I would be in favor of tabling it, so we can control some type of distance from a structure. Because I can make a motion tonight, and we can see what happens, but I think it'd be more conducive to table it and put some type of distance from another structure, so we can have it at the next meeting. So I would move to table this.
It's been motioned, is there a second? Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I guess the one question I would have on this is that, if you're going to stay at a distance, I would like to know what reference you're using in terms of having it be substantiated by something, not just, not just an arbitrary number, I wanted...
What is the, what is the number of the discharge for the firearms?
I believe it's 150 feet, yeah.
Oh, okay, so I was, I was thinking yards. That's why I said 300 feet. I thought it was 100 yards.
150 feet is what it said.
Okay. So, thank you, Greg, for that. I was, I computed it for yards to feet, so I, we have a motion and a second, so let's see what happens.
Well, we've already taken the vote. I don't know if we got it, but we'll table it until next week.
Well, we have to do a roll call.
Oh, roll call, okay.
We all said yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll just add on this. I would like to discuss the distance being, Ward One's interesting, because I've got both the neighborhoods and the rural area, and if there was something that we could craft to wear, and you're in the rural area, you really have no worries, but if you're in the neighborhood, you can pretty much, shouldn't be doing it. I'm going to be game for that distance, whatever that is.
Yeah, well, that'll, that's...
So we'll see how that goes.
That'll make it even more sticky.
If I can just ask one final question on this, but, you know, if we table this potential that Chief Hamlin isn't here, if I get a direct question to you. So in the situation that Mr. Paul brought up here, people shooting fireworks, you're not allowed to shoot them, doesn't matter daytime, I know you're not allowed to shoot them in the middle of the road there. So in that situation, let's say he had called the non-emergency number. What would have been the, the possible response, you know, by the Clayton PD? Oh, so we have to catch them, you know, there, and, yeah, that's, I mean, fireworks aren't just like that, that's a lot of things, but, you know, loud stereos, things like that, but just kind of wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so that ordinance is tabled. And the next item is new business. Will you read the first ordinance, please? Yes, resolution, sorry.
Resolution R-072443. A resolution requesting the state of Ohio Director of Transportation modify the speed limit to 35 miles per hour on Main Street within the city of Clayton, Ohio, from Greenview Drive at SLM 20.039 to the end of the corporation limit at SLM 21.028.
Is there a motion?
Well, I just...
Questions?
So what do those numbers mean, the 20.039 and the 21.028?
Those are straight line miles, and that's how ODOT identifies Main Street. So it, because that's a state route that is identified by straight line mileage, so that's a 20.039 mile marker. The 21.028 is not the corporation limit. That's, that is the corporation limit, so basically it's from Myers to, I want to say it was Greenview, wasn't it? Greenview Drive. So those are those mile markers right there that they want to keep at 35. When they, when they did the speed study for these particular, actually, there was five roads altogether they did the speed study for. Two of the roads came back that there was no change necessary, which was Haber Road and 40, I believe it was. And these three roads that you have, these three resolutions are the ones that came in for a reduction for speed. One of the factors, obviously, was crashes. Just in that very short stretch of one block, and this does not include Garber Road on 48, and it's the south entrance of Meyer, everybody knows what that's like to try to hang a left or a right out of there during business or busy time, there was 38 crashes in that block in the four years they ran.
Well, that doesn't have anything to do with speed, though, Randy. If somebody's pulling out in front of me, it doesn't matter how fast I'm going. If I'm going 20 miles an hour, I'm still going to hit them.
That is exactly right. However, there's a whole lot of crashes in that 100-block area. So that's, and I think that has a lot to do with it, is that south entrance of Myers. I mean, that's something we're working on with our project as a maybe possibility of a ride-in and ride-out only. So that would, that would solve some of those issues. But again, I think it's the only area, we have a 35 on one end, we had a 45 in our section only, and then we go right back to 35 when they did the speed study, because of the traffic between the hospital and that area, Myers, and that section of where the restaurants were, was the worst section. That's why warranted the reduction.
Once it becomes 45, it stays 45 till Shiloh.
Yeah, just in Harrison Township, correct.
In this area that you're talking about, there's three red lights. One at Garber, one at Heathcliff, and one at Greenview.
Correct.
So, I mean, how can you get up that much speed in between the two? And the only one that is a distance is the one from Heathcliff to Greenview.
Yeah, I don't know. That's part of the speed study, so.
So I guess, I have a somewhat more personal interest in this. So Main and Westbrook Dog Lake did not enter into this as being an intersection of any problem?
Westbrook did.
Yes.
That's, that's one of the other resolutions.
I mean... So that section of Main Street, we talked to the engineers when they did the study about extending this all the way to Westbrook, to have it 35 all the way down. And it was actually a little bit of a stretch to get them to extend it to Greenview, because there is no development, no high density development that they have north there, towards Myers. The development's not there yet, so there's not the traffic that's there. So they said that it wasn't warranted to lower the speed to 35.
Yeah, but I could be standing down at the, there at Main Street at Dog Lake Westbrook Road and watch cars zip through that intersection going a lot faster than 45 mile an hour.
I don't disagree.
And I think one patrol officer said his clock's going 81. Well, I'm just telling you the standpoint, I mean, I, my dad, my dad owned that property, and I mean, seeing people come, you know, slipping off Westbrook Road, coming down Main Street, heading north, you know, miss the intersection, jump the curb, and end up in a creek.
No doubt of mine. Chief will tell you, there's quite a few crashes there as well. Now, that intersection, that traffic signal doesn't belong to us, it actually belongs to ODOT.
But I'm just surprised that they didn't, that didn't enter into the conversation of reducing speed.
Well, two, two things, I'd like to throw some input on this, is, again, I'm looking at the data, and, I mean, I think we need to take into consideration the speed study. They're recommending this, so I think we, you know, I think we do it, unless there's a reason not to do it. But the other thing, again, I go back to many conversations I've had with Chief, lower speed limit, again, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not a very fast driver, kind of a slow driver these days, but the lower the speed limits, the lower the crashes, and the lower, the lower the severity of the crashes. And that's why I, I've always said, you know, we have these, some of these roads that we have, even a road like Haber, you know, roads like this, my son lived out on Diamond Mill, and I mean, the cars and dump trucks go drive 80 miles an hour out there. I mean, it's a very common thing. And we need to, I, in my mind, we need to adopt these for that reason, because I think that is the data that's out there. And again, you know, we're talking about the best, the highest thing that a city government can do is the safety of our citizens, and you're still going to get the guy who's driving 80, I get it, but again, our speed limits should be consistent, and I believe that all of these will help.
Well, I just want to add one more thing here. Chief, if you need permission for officers to sit at that 7600, 7602 Main Street parking lot, you have my permission to park an officer there to monitor people.
I've been here 20 years, I've sat in that parking lot 20 times.
Well, I say, if you, if you need, if you need permission, you've got my permission.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Farmer?
No.
Kenning?
No.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. And could you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution R-072444. A resolution requesting the state of Ohio Director of Transportation modify the speed limit to 35 miles per hour on Garber Road within the city of Clayton, Ohio, from Westbrook Road to Main Street.
Move for approval.
Second.
So my only question with this one was, why is Garber Road, why do we need their approval, the state of Ohio for Garber Road? I understand for a state route, but...
We technically don't need their approval. It was recommended by, what is her name? The engineer, yes, from ODOT.
Correct.
That we, we just follow this process.
So we...
Now, here's, here's the process as it is. If you, if you take it, and say we, we decide we want to do Main Street all the way through, okay? If we try to change that to 35, it's not really enforceable as a, as a city, because it's, that is not what was recommended by ODOT. And that includes side roads, that includes Westbrook, that includes any of them. You can change them, as a city, you can change them.
Okay, we've been motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. And we read the third resolution, please.
Resolution R-072445. A resolution requesting the state of Ohio Director of Transportation modify the speed limit to 35 miles per hour on Westbrook Road within the city of Clayton, Ohio, from 0.37 miles west of Salem Avenue, State Route 49, to Main Street, State Route 48, and to further modify the speed limit to 45 miles an hour on Westbrook Road within the city of Clayton, Ohio, from Diamond Mill Road to 0.37 miles west of Salem Avenue, State Route 49.
Just to give you guys an idea where that is, because I knew that question was going to come up anyway. The 35 mile an hour go just beyond, I don't know what those apartments are called, so basically just west of 49, where those apartments sit right up there, that will be the 35, where the 35 will end, and then it will be 45 from there on.
Westbrook apartment, it's just east of...
And Westbrook was another, one of those routes that we had a bunch of complaints on. Now, I realize 40 to 35 doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're going through those hills and stuff from 49, it's, it's...
And that's where they're putting the new development, there's a new walkway.
Correct.
So Randy, along Westbrook there, past these apartments, is it currently 50?
It's 50.
So it's just going to 45?
Now, we're, we're in talks, I'll let Amanda talk to you about that, but we're in talks about some other things that might slow traffic down at Hoke Road in Westbrook.
Well, I'll just add, yeah, I'm the numbers guy up here, that, yeah, that five mile an hour difference, I'm asking myself in my head, yeah, that reduces risk, but is that significant? I just don't, you know, how much is, what, how do you define significant? And I don't want to create a whole new discussion, but I'm just telling you, it's what I'm thinking about.
We pushed for 35 all the way to Diamond Mill.
Okay, no.
But there's a conversation for potential roundabout?
There is. So we received notification from our city engineer that there is a potential for full funding for a roundabout at Hoke and Westbrook. And we have been in talks with the city of Trotwood to split the engineering cost for the application for that, and they are agreeable. And they're also agreeable, since half of the road does belong to the city of Trotwood, to limit or change the speed limits to 35 in the section that we're changing to 35, and then 45 in the sections that we're changing to 45. So it'll be the same on both sides of the road.
We're going to make Hoke the road of roundabouts then, right?
We are.
We're going to have one at Winger and one at Westbrook?
Yes, we're going to rival Mason, Ohio.
Just one red light in between every... Just one red light in between around 49, huh? Oh, boy, that'll be neat, huh?
So you have a roundabout with people. So, like I asked you earlier, so we'll have a roundabout with people going 45 mile an hour?
So, so if there is, if that were to come to fruition, there would be further studies, and there may be a reduction in speed at that point. At this point, though, our engineers did the speed study, and it wasn't warranted to limit it to 35 miles an hour past the point that we're suggesting.
I know, I was just, it just seemed kind of.
I move for approval on the resolution that we're on here.
Let me throw one more, I'm going to throw one more thing in here. We have been pushed and pushed from Trotwood, since I've been here for 10 years, to put a signal at that, at that intersection. We know how dangerous that intersection is with the school, the cat, and all the stuff that's going on right there. We know how dangerous that intersection is. This was an opportunity that we didn't feel like we probably should pass up if it's offered because it's 100% paid, and that does include engineering, and that does include construction engineering, which is very unusual. The state has apparently a lot of money for roundabouts, so.
Maybe they can put one at Haber National, too. Well, if we can ever get a stoplight there, and they're going to keep it at 50 miles an hour. So we have a motion in the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous also. All right, the next item is the city manager's report. Amanda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a few items for you this evening. One of the items that I do have on my city manager's report is concerning leaf collection in the city of Clayton, if you'll recall when we discussed the 2024 budget. That was one of the items that was going to be, or limited or reduced. We did take the dink mark leaf machines out of the capital improvement budget that were supposed to be purchased this year, so we would not have any transfers to the CIP from the general fund to help stabilize the general fund. We have had requests from, from Mr. Henning to have this in discussion. I did provide to you the amount that it does cost the city if we do do leaf collection. I mentioned it earlier when Mr. Grimes was up, but in 2023, it cost us $60,000, or $60,878 for the five weeks of leaf collection. Using the numbers for the trucks from last year, so we can have kind of more an apples-to-apples comparison, the cost would be $69,808. So it's gone up roughly $9,000 or so over the course of the year to do that program. Not only does it take resources to do this, it also takes staff time. I mean, so we have our staff out doing that rather than something else. Ultimately, if this is something that council decides that they want to do, I would make the suggestion, as I made earlier, that we limit it to streets that do have curb and gutter so that, you know, if that is what we are trying to prevent is the system from being clogged, that we take care of it that way. And then we can begin pushing out information that Rumki will take bagged leaves. And that is also something that I want council to bear in mind, that Rumki will take leaves from October 1st through December 15th. We can begin pushing out that information. Residents also have the option of mulching leaves if they mow them over. That's another option.
You know, I didn't want to interrupt you on this, but I, and I, maybe I read this wrong, but I think in the Rub, in the Rumki literature, I think they'll take all yard waste.
They will, they'll take all yard waste, they will. But it's specifically called out in our contract in that section that it is, that they will take leaves from October 1st through December 15th.
I mean, I would be in favor of making a motion, do pickup for any area that has storm drains for a leaf pickup if you want it tonight, I'd make that motion.
I'd still like to leave it the way it is and discuss it, and I think there's, I think it's more than that, actually, so.
It's more than that, what?
I want to, I want to look closer at the cost, and I, I just think it warrants a discussion.
Then can we have like a 30-minute workshop at the next meeting?
If that's what you'd like, I can schedule for the 15th a 30-minute work session prior to the council meeting.
I mean, I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I think before the, kind of a work session, if you have questions, I think we should, if you have questions regarding doing leaf pickup, anybody who's got questions should basically submit those to Amanda before time.
That would be helpful. Not only that, not only that, I mean, if we're having a work session on August 15th concerning this topic, and council decides that you're still not going to pursue the leaf collection program, that gives me a very limited amount of time to be able to get information put together and pushed out to the community that they need to bag their leaves. Our deadline for the newsletter to have information to our publisher for the fall newsletter, which doesn't even get into mailboxes until September, is August 19th. That's the date that I have to have the information to him. So a, well, I understand that, you know, we want to have more discussion, and we can schedule the August 15th meeting. That puts staff in a very hard position to then get information out to the residents. As Mr. Grimes stated, people, as much as we want them, or it was maybe Mr. Augie, we want people to look at the website, we want people to read the newsletter, it doesn't happen. It doesn't always happen.
Do we have a possible workshop before that meeting date?
Well, I mean, we could always schedule the first meeting in August, and I know that council wanted to cancel that. I don't know if you want to schedule solely for the purpose of a work session concerning leaves. We can schedule it for a different date, it doesn't have to be on a council evening.
Well, I'm just thinking from the standpoint of giving time for doing information collection and data put together for newsletter, everything. I mean, if we give information to you in terms of what to work on and what to look at for questions, so we can sit down and talk about it, as far as overall how impact on budget, personnel, and those items.
Well, I mean, that information is already, if we're talking about the impact on budget and personnel, those items are already in front of you. You have those this evening. I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think at this point, what we're basically discussing is perception. Yes, it's perception and whether or not this council views the leaf collection program as a vital service that needs to be provided to the citizens, or if it is something that is in the budget that is a very nice amenity to have in your community, but if it comes down to the point where you need to cut items from the budget, this is one of those things that can be eliminated. And I think that is the question that this council needs to answer. And the sooner this council can answer that question, the easier it is for staff to be able to move forward. Because I'm going to tell you that staff has been operating since the budget was enacted that the leafing program was not going to take place. I know that we did not, well, the dink marks were taken out of the, the budget, but also we didn't do the maintenance on the, the leaf machines because we did not plan to do the collection. So outside of the $69,000 that it would cost, estimated cost that it would do, for us to do the leaves this year, it's another $10,000 to $15,000 in parts that we would need to purchase, and then two weeks for us to outfit those machines to have them ready to go back onto the road by the beginning of October. I don't know if I missed anything, Randy, if there's anything else you'd like to add, or if that kind of covers it.
No, it's just the bearings and stuff that we have to, we'll go through the bearings every year, and those, like Amanda had said, that those machines are 15, 16 years old now. So to answer Mr. Gorman's question, at least 15, 16 years we've been picking up leaves. So that, that was actually the one from last year, we, we were separating them to have one each year replaced, and we canceled it last year, and we canceled this year as well. So the leaf machines didn't get picked up, they are on borrowed time, but we can replace bearings and we can get them ready.
I thought we were going to discuss it at a workshop, Amanda.
I, I, yes, I know.
I'd rather have an answer tonight.
Right, it, it would be helpful for staff to be able to push out whatever information.
Let's have a meeting on the second Thursday of August, like we always did in the past, then.
Well, I think one of the issues with it, I don't know, since we've had it canceled, I'm just going to say, since we've had it canceled the entire summer, we've had it planned, canceled, I don't know if anyone else has vacations planned.
I don't want to be here, and I don't think it's fair to staff because we had already approved it off. I would once again make a motion to do leaf pickup at least once in neighborhoods with storm drains. And if it doesn't get a second, you hear tonight watching it, and, or in person, you can then email the other council members that didn't make a second to want to vote on this. But I made a motion.
Well, I would, I would kind of like to go the opposite of that. I know I kind of opened up the door to this, and I don't know if it was the right thing to do or not, but, you know. Well, we haven't scheduled anything yet. The, the bottom line is, too, I think we could make the same argument for every other thing that we've canceled. You know, they're all, they're all great programs, or we would never have done them. We've had, I mean, of all the things that we've done, they've all been really good, good things. And the leaf, again, I, I don't, it, it's not vital. It is a good thing, but, you know, again, it's, you know, it's, it's a private property issue, you know, you maintain your own properties. I get it, you know, I'm, I'm not quite 70, but I'm close, I'm 65. And I, if I had a lot of large, you know, sycamore trees, I don't know if I'd be out, I'd be chopping them up with my mower, probably, but instead of dragging it out, I mean, if, if I had to vote, I would say we keep it as it is and say no leaf pickup. So that's just my opinion on it.
Oh, we have an alternate, too, with Rumki picking up all the leaves and bags, and they don't limit the number of bags. So, I mean, that's an alternate in my mind. At least we have something out there that we can provide Rumki.
I'm going to add, there's a great business opportunity out there if we go with just leaf bagging for somebody out there and help, help folks like the mayor do some bagging. So just a plug for business, that's all.
So I don't know where we're at. I think Kenny's made a motion for, for.
We don't have a second, so I guess we can just move on to council comments.
Okay, so we'll just go forward as it is.
Okay.
As it is.
Um, just an item that I want to make council aware of. The control box at Westbrook and State Route 49 was installed as part of the State Route 49 and Westbrook Road intersection safety project. It was struck by a vehicle traveling on Westbrook Road, and that vehicle continued to travel southbound on State Route 49. The driver of the vehicle was not able to be identified, and we were not able to pursue a claim through their insurance. Since that time, the control box has failed, and the light has malfunctioned four times. The box will need to be replaced. The cost to replace the box and the materials inside the box are a little over $36,000. So we're going to be taking that money from 401, 402, and 403, which are all the roads, permissive tax, from those funds to replace that. We are looking at installing guardrail at those locations to protect the box. I think the guardrail for there and for Union and 49, the total comes to $12,000. We'll look at that in the budget next year. But $12,000 for those two guardrails is a lot cheaper than $36,000 every time those, those boxes are struck. Just a note, we do have a new employee. Officer Monin left the service of the city in May of 2024. The city of Clayton has hired Mr. Jack Anderson to fill that position in the police department. And just as a note for city council, since you're going to be seeing his, his face around, we are still operating two officers down in the police department. We've discussed fireworks. The fire command vehicle, so in June of 2023, city council approved a resolution that allowed staff to enter into a lease agreement with Enterprise for two vehicles for the fire department. The two vehicles were replaced, the two frontline vehicles. The city has received the first of the two vehicles. The photos are attached to the city manager's report. And the chief's former command vehicle has been transferred to the police department for their utilization, whether it's for the detective or the lieutenant, I'm, whatever Chief Hamlin sees as the best fit. And then trash collection, so Republic is slated to have all of their totes removed. They were supposed to have them out by July 15th. That has not happened. We do have an MOU with them that now the trash totes that have Republic on the side of them no longer belong to Republic. So when your trash day is, make sure you put those trash bins out and have them in line with your other trash bins. Rumki will take them and just dispose of them on the spot. So you no longer have to worry about those.
They took mine today, finally.
Good, that's good. And then as a final note, there is a new requirement for fraud reporting and training. The Ohio Auditor of State has issued a bulletin, which is attached to the report, that county, city, village, and township employees and elected officials, which you all are, are required to complete the training between May, or July 1st and September 28th, 2024. The training is required every four years, and each employee or elected official who is new has to do the training as well. It is on demand, the link is in the city manager's report, and I also sent it out in an email to everyone. I do have one city council member who's already completed it and has brought it to the city building. So when you do complain it, if you want to either bring it in with you or just email the certificate to me, it's a total of a seven-minute video you have to watch, and, and you get your certificate, so. And that is all I have for you this evening, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions or comments?
I have one question regarding the Talmadge Road Church, as we discussed it earlier. Can you give just like a brief comment about the church itself, the road? I've had a lot of residents call regarding the usage of the church, but now as a private resident, so, and the roadway.
So the church that sits at the corner of Spring, Spring Street and Talmadge operated as a church for many years. I think it stopped operations, the church, in 2016, 2015, 2016-ish. And during the time that it operated as a church, there is an alley that runs parallel to Talmadge Road, it's Plum Tree Alley. And that, that alley continues as a paper street all the way to Spring Street. However, the church allowed people to use their drive to access the alley. And the city is, does not maintain the section of road that is technically the church property's driveway. When the private resident moved into that church building and began using it as a private residence rather than a church, they made the decision that they no longer wanted to allow people access to their private property to access Plum Street. So they have placed a sign on their property telling people that it's private property, and in turn, the city has placed a sign on the other end of Plum Street at Mill Street, not saying that people can't access the alley, but that there is no outlet now from the alley. And I believe that it has caused some irritation in the community and on Talmadge Road because that has happened, but it's not the city's, it's not, it's not our alleyway. That section is not ours to tell people that they can access. And if the private property owners made the decision that they don't want to allow people to access it, we cannot force them to allow people to access it.
I, just one quick question for Martina on this because one of the emails that came on this subject, I'm almost kind of embarrassed to ask this question, but mentioned common, common law? Is that such a thing?
I, I think they might be referring to adverse possession is what they might be referring to, but for adverse possession, you have to have adverse possession, meaning if the church allowed those people to access through there, that's not adverse, that is permissive. So, and you have to have that for 21 years, and it has to be open, notorious, exclusive for a period of 21 years and adverse. So if it was permitted, permissible, then it wasn't adverse, if that's what they're talking about.
Okay, anything else, Amanda?
On the Republic trash collection thing, I, the issue of getting phone calls for delinquent bills?
Yes, so we were notified by multiple residents and by city council members that Republic has decided that they were going to send out messages to residents that they were delinquent for the bills from July to September, which is not the case. We are no longer in the contract with Republic. And if residents are getting those letters stating that from July to September, or phone calls stating that July to September are due, that it's not the case, they are not going to send you to collections, those can be ignored and thrown away. If you do, however, have bills that are in arrears, so from any quarter prior to that, you still need to pay that to Republic, but anything from July forward, you do not need to pay. We have been in contact with Rum, uh, Rumki, I'm sorry, with Republic multiple times. I know I've contacted them at least twice. I know that staff has contacted them multiple times, telling them that this is an issue. They have assured us that anyone who has paid will be refunded by August 1st. I had a conversation with the law director today that if, if they do not uphold that if we start getting phone calls from residents after that fact, we can talk about what our next steps may be. Unfortunately, I think that it might, it might be an individual issue that people are going to have to take them to court or whatever on their own, but that does not mean that we will not advocate for the residents who are having that issue.
I hope someone took notes on this Republic company because they really get it, they're probably mad, you know, that they didn't get renewed on the contract and things, but they really did a really bad job on this, all the way around.
I agree 100%. I have a city manager's meeting on the 5th, and Roundtable comes up, this is definitely going to be a topic of conversation. And I know that we're not the only city that has run into this with Republic when there has been a transition. I know Huber Heights went through this a few years ago. They had some of the same issues.
I had a conversation with you earlier about a conversation I had with a neighbor who lives on Allison regarding people driving up and down Allison, Ashbrook, late at night, checking car doors, and then things being removed. And they were wondering what could be done about that. And apparently, Chief, in the conversation I had with Amanda, this, this is not a unique situation for, for Al.
Yes, this is not exclusive to the city of Clayton. Yes, this is not exclusive to the city of Clayton, it's happening in Inglewood, Union, Brookville, Trotwood, I mean, people are coming in, they're checking for unlocked doors, is what they're checking for. And I know that the police department has made a concerted effort, actually, all of the police departments in the area have made a concerted effort to push out, the people should do their 9:00 PM routine, they should make sure they bring all of their valuables in from their car, they should make sure the doors are locked, don't leave cash or values, if you do leave them in the car, do not leave them where they can be seen, and make sure the doors are locked. Because they're not breaking into cars that are unlocked, for now. It's been cars that are un, yeah.
Well, the other question was concerning the, the fast speed which people are driving up and down Allison, and I had mentioned that these people suggested speed bumps. Well, I, well, I did not advocate for speed bumps going on a city street from the standpoint of snowplows being busted in the wintertime, for one. But then there was also the, the potential idea of, talk about putting depressions in middle of the road to slow traffic down, but I'm not necessarily advocating that either if it's not something that's reasonable or feasible, but the people are expressing concerns about fast speeds on residential roads.
Okay, anything else for our city manager? And we don't have any need for any executive session tonight, so we're gonna go with our council's comments. Mr. Farmer, you'll start.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Residents who commented, thank you very much. Mr. Grimes, I particularly appreciate your comments. I think that combined with what the city manager and the mayor are hitting tonight, I had to smile a little bit, because you made the case for what I brought up earlier this year about prioritized budgeting, in terms of flying things up to our values to create some consistency, because right now, my evidence I've seen is our decision-making is, has some inconsistencies to it, and, you know, something looks good, let's do that, or, you know, it, there, there isn't any sound rationale that's consistent. So, I'm just asking that when we look at the next year's budget, that maybe we pause and look at what our priorities are, and create some consistency, that will help us with our residents to say, this is why we're paying for this and not for this, this is why we're cutting this and not this. And I think that would go a long way also, that if they see too many things are being cut with good reason, that, okay, I see why we need to raise income tax, and I'd support it. So it can be a great tool for us as a, as a collective with staff to have some grounding of sound reason and rationale in our prioritization of our budget, so, and that's all I have tonight, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
I have just a few things, the first being something we all probably saw and witnessed or heard about on July 13th, another dark day in our country's history. As always, no matter who your candidate is, political violence is not how we go about changes in our country. Obviously, I was glad to see that the former President Trump was okay and prayers were answered. I think we would have all felt that way for any candidate running for office. In regards to Ohio, Senator J.D. Vance, I think, in regards to Ohio, I think it is very good for us to continue to be on the spotlight in national news, and we'll see what happens with that race, but I think he will make a very good vice presidential candidate. And you all heard and saw where I stand on fireworks tonight and leaf pickup. I, I really do think the storm drains are going to be clogged, I know people aren't going to do anything, we paid thousands of dollars for these new curbs in the neighborhoods, they're going to look horrible once all the leaves stain it, there's just a lot of issues that are going to stem from this no action of leaf pickup, so, a little disheartened by that, but you all here tonight and anybody watching can see how that went, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Murphy?
Not much to say other than, Chief, I do appreciate the work that you and officers do provide. I've never known you to be apathetic to anything that's been needed in terms of public safety and providing service to the community. I know there's been times when I, I and/or my, my family, my dad and his business needed service, and it was provided very timely, and it was always appreciated. So I appreciate all the work that you and your officers do.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
Ditto. I appreciate everything that your force does with limited staff, I know it's tough, and I don't know how things could be policed or followed through if we did ban the fireworks. That would be a hard situation with the amount of road waste that we have and residents. But I understand the concern. Also, I wanted to thank Deborah Saw from the community table for coming in to discuss what this program's about, and it's such a need for this Northmont community, with students going back to school, with food, just in general. This is such a great program, everyone knows now where to donate monetarily, or donation for items. It's such a great program, especially for this time, for back to school. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bachmann?
Nothing to add, then, Mr. Mayor.
And I really don't have anything else to add either, I want to say thanks to everybody for coming in, thanks for voicing, voicing your opinions, we are, we, we want that, we encourage that, and we're open to that. Hopefully, we had some discussion, they don't always go the way, you know, that people want them to, or the way we want them to either sometimes, so, I do, we do appreciate everyone's interest, though. Just want to say thanks to, you know, not only our PD, I did meet our new officer today, by the way, but I want to thanks not only the, the police department, but the rest of the staff, we are running short staff here. We've, we've put off some hiring, again, due to the budget, due to budget restraints, and we, at this point, have not missed a beat, to my knowledge. I think everybody's really sucked it up and just done an exceptional job, so I appreciate everyone's work on that, and also, I appreciate the council, and also, and again, all of our residents, so, thanks, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.